Good evening. And we're calling to order the April 18th meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I want you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you for that. We've had a little bit of a fire drill tonight trying to get everyone here, including me. But just by way of a roll call, we have Trustee Mitchell, Trustee Cross, Vice Chair Laura Smith-Evatt, and Trustee Jennings here. I believe that Trustee Ratan is on her way and will be arriving shortly. So we do have a quorum. And the first item on our agenda is the Budget Workshop, which is why we're here at 4:00. And Janelle Vogler, if you'd like to take the podium, and it's all yours.
Great. Thank you so much. Can you hear me? I always have trouble with this microphone.
We can hear you, yes.
Thank you.
It's not the best.
It's not on.
It's not very loud.
I can hear you, but it's not on.
No. Okay. Help is on the way. Or maybe I'm not close enough. Okay. I'll just speak louder.
There you go.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. Well, thank you. I am pleased to kick off the FY24-25 Budget Workshop. Just by way of an overview of what I'm planning to cover today, you all should have received your Budget Workshop books. It's also on the screen for our audience. And I'm planning to do a high-level overview of what's in the book, and then I have a PowerPoint presentation kind of summarizing all of the components of the budget, and then I'll go over next steps. So for those that are either in our listening audience or watching later on the recording, this whole publication is available on our website. If you search "budget" in the search line, the very first link that comes up contains five years of these, five years of our budget documents, and five years of our audited financial statements, which are riveting reading. So you should all go take a look. All right. Fantastic. So before I get started, this would be a really good time for me to thank Chandra Russell, our Budget Director, and Debbie Stormin, our Budget Analyst, for all of the hard work that they put in to create this document for you. Because there's, as you can see, there's a lot of information, a lot of figures, a lot of numbers, and it all comes together beautifully for this meeting. So thank you both. Okay. So with that, let's take a look at the workshop materials. See if I can get this going along with me. So I'm going to start us here on page one. This page and this page are basically overviews of our strategic plan, our FY21 to FY25 strategic plan. And I wanted to bring that to your attention because everything we do in developing budgets and all of the allocations of our resources, we make sure that that is all pointed towards supporting the achievement of our goals and objectives as laid out there. Okay. So the next thing we'll take a look at are the budget guidelines, beginning there on page six. What you have in front of you here are the preliminary guidelines that this board approved in December. And a couple of things I'll draw your attention to. Number two, at that time, we were estimating that the increase in assessed valuation in the county would be around 7%. And I'll show you in a minute, but as it turns out, our crystal ball was working really well in December because it actually came in just above 7%. And so when we factor in the history and our delinquency rate and some of those things, we are actually using 7% as our figure for calculating our tax levies. Also, on number four, the tuition cost per credit hour. As you recall, in the fall, we proposed, and this board approved, a 4% across-the-board tuition rate increase. It was our first one in a number of years, and those rates are outlined there. And so thank you for doing that for us in December. That allows us to publicize the rates for students to plan, so our financial aid department can start working on aid and all of those good things that go along with that. So then we move on to the next page, and that is actually the guidelines that have been updated to where we are today. As I mentioned, the 7% is still there in number two. The thing I'll draw your attention to is number five, and that has to do with the amount of money we receive from the state in our base operating grants. So at this point, we know what those numbers are going to be. So they've been reduced slightly by about $900,000 because they have now applied the funding formula, and based on our three-year average enrollment, that is the actual amount we're going to receive. And so those numbers, I'll show you in a minute what they actually are. But again, those are our base operating grants and only in the general fund. So then I'll move on to the next page. That is the budget calendar. And as you can see, if it looks like we do budget year-round, we do. Just about the time we'll finish this cycle, we start working on the next one. Lots and lots of people are involved in this. The college has over 130 budget administrators, our budget department, all of Cabinet, that does a lot of work in prioritizing and refining the budget requests, and all of the individual, all across campus that prepare the individual budgets. So we feel really good about this process. It's a very transparent process. All of this information is on our website, and lots of information goes into preparing it. So we're actually right here in April at the Board of Trustees Budget Workshop. So before I move on to revenues, just want to make sure, any questions on those first few things that I've gone over?
Can I get clarification? This isn't, because it's a workshop, I don't, we need to do, or go through the chair, sorry. Didn't mean to circumvent you there.
No, you're fine. Okay.
So just making sure I got it right, you said that the state aid is being reduced by $900,000?
It's not reduced from what it was last year.
Okay. So it's being reduced to $900,000?
No. It's actually quite a bit more than that. It's $900,000 less.
So being reduced by $900,000?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I've got some detailed information on that base operating grant, and also all of the funds that are coming from the state a little bit later.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. All right. So let's move on to our revenues. So here is the donut chart, like we like to call it, that summarizes our primary sources of revenue. So we have three primary sources of revenue. The largest piece of that, that dark blue, is our ad valorem property taxes. So our budget contains an allocation for $128,894.722. That's 68% of our general fund revenue budget, followed up with tuition and fees, which are estimated at $28.7. And then to answer your question, Trustee Everett, Smith Everett, the state aid is actually $26.491 is what the actual amount will be. And that's, again, for that tiered and non-tiered base operating grant in the general fund. Okay. So this next page is the same information. It just shows it to you over a 10-year period, so you can see the trends. As you can see, the total dollar amount has grown, but the categories or buckets are about the same percentage-wise over the last few, four, five years. So we've been hovering right around 66%, 68% ad valorem, and then 15% and 14% accordingly. And I meant to say this early on, there's quite a bit, so I moved through this at a pretty good pace, but please stop me when you have questions, so I can make sure and answer them. All right. I know that's small on the screen, but this is just a little bit closer look at JCC's mill levy and how that is, how we calculate that and apply it to the budget. So if you look down at the bottom, because we are using that 7%, we are not recommending a mill levy reduction this year, or a change, I guess, at all this year on the mill levy. So you'll see that 7% on the FY25 estimated row down there at the bottom. You will notice, though, it shows a .02 mill levy reduction. And what that is related to is we have had a 2/100ths of a mill, make sure I said that right, 2/100ths of a mill special assessment. We've been using that for several years now to pay for our wastewater tax. This year, Campus Services and Sustainability did some work, and they installed some irrigation meters, and that's no longer a tax. It's actually a utility charge, like all of our other utility charges, and it's also been lowered by quite a bit because of that work. So we are planning to sunset that levy this year. So while we're not proposing a mill levy change, there is a very small lower dropping of the mill levy. And that's about $300,000 in revenue that comes in in that special assessment. So the plan is, we have about a million to a million and a half in that fund. We'll use that fund, pay that down on the wastewater fees, and then after that, that utility charge will move over to the general fund. And, quick math, eight to 10 years. Any questions on mill levy?
Yes. Can you just say that part about the water one more time as I'm processing?
It's okay. I had to think two or three times, too. So we were paying, and I can defer to some people that know a little more about it, too. We were paying a wastewater tax on the wastewater, and our Campus Services installed irrigation meters. So the way I understand it, and Rachel can correct me if I may, I'm correct on this, we now measure the amount of water we use, and so now it's a utility fee instead of a tax. So because that 2/10ths of, no, 2/100ths of a mill was a special assessment, it went in a special fund, the purpose for which we had it has ended, so we'll stop levying it.
But then what did you say about eight to 10 years?
So there's about a million and a half in that fund, in the special assessment fund?
Gotcha.
Yeah. So we'll pay that down over a number of years and continue to pay the wastewater fees. When that is exhausted, then we'll start paying that out of the general fund.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Pay down, you mean use up. Is that right?
Yes. I said it backwards.
No, no, no. I didn't mean to. Correct. I'm just asking.
Yeah. Because it's a special assessment, we can't use it for other things, so we will use it just specifically for that.
Quite right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So a couple more pages go into a little more detail on our mill levy. This page has a lot of numbers on it, but if you look at the right-hand column, 2023, which is the year we're in, or last year's budget that we talked about. So if you picture that, a fictional residence at the college, at the corner of College in Quavera, county tells us the average residential value was $432,000. So our portion of that tax was $404. So if you look above that, you'll see the total mill that that fictional resident, residents would be assessed is just shy of 112. Our portion is 8.131, or eight mils. And actually, it's kind of good news, if you look across that next row, you'll see that our proportion of the taxes even went down a percent of the total tax bill that that person would pay at that house. So then if you look to the next page, you'll see some of that same information, and all the way on the right is the proposed budget that we're bringing tonight. So the county tells us that same house's average value is now $459,000. At that same mill levy, our taxes would be $428 for that resident. So that's about a $25 increase over last year. So about just over $2 a month more that each resident would pay in our mill levy. And there's some other information there, just for your information, to kind of see other taxing entities around us, but that gives you an idea of what our portion would be. Okay. So this next page, I'm on page 17, just a different look at our mill levy and our tax revenues. Same thing, you'll see, it's all laid out graphically, our projected mill, even though we're keeping it the same, you'll see it goes from that 8.13 to 8.11 because of that special assessment that we're not going to levy. And across the, you'll see our revenue's gone up, but the vast majority of that increase has been due to property tax, I'm sorry, assessed valuation increases as opposed to changes in our mill levy. Before I move on to tuition and fees, are there any questions about the mill levy or the proposed tax revenues?
Thank you for that.
Okay. Okay. So on this next page, I'm on page 18, you can see our history of our student credit hour enrollment. Down in the bottom two rows, those are both budgeted numbers because we haven't completed this year. So if you look at 2024, the fiscal year that we're in, it looks like our enrollment went down. It did not actually, because that's a budget number. Census for Spring '24, I understand, we were looking at about a, just shy of 5% growth. I think it was 4.9% growth. So we have based our estimates on 2% over budget. So not 2% over actual, because we don't know the actual at the end of the year yet. So it's probably a fairly conservative estimate that we're basing those numbers on, but that's, that is what was part of the budget guidelines, that 2%. That make sense?
I have a question. So the enrollment's gone up, maybe the number of credit hours they took went down?
Both went up.
Both went up.
Both went up. The reason that you see that is because that 2024 is a budget number and not an actual. So later on, when we update this after the end of the semester, you'll see it actually went up closer to 5%.
So it's essentially a placeholder, then, that we put into the budget that we estimate?
Mm-hmm.
And then we, yeah, we compare that to what our actual numbers are at the end of the budget cycle, right?
Yeah. That's exactly right.
Just making sure I'm translating correctly. Thank you.
So back on that donut chart where it had the number that we project for tuition and fees, it's based on the new tuition rates and that 2% increase over the prior year's budget. It may very well come in larger than that. Okay. So the next several pages allow us to take a look at the different residency categories. As you might expect, our largest category, of course, are Johnson County residents. That's the big blue piece of the pie there, the bright blue piece. So by credit hour count, it's, Johnson County residents are 70% of our students. By revenue, they're 62% of our revenue, which makes sense because their rate is lower than the other rates, followed up by the green, which is Kansas, and the, make sure I get it right, the yellow is out-of-state and international students, and then blue is our metro rate that has been getting quite a bit of use. So that kind of shows you the breakout. The next several pages are a 10-year history on those same categories. So if you look, for instance, on this first page, you can see the Johnson County resident, and you'll see that tuition increase of $4 that we added. The green is actually the fees, and there's a chart on fees in just a minute, but we have not changed the mandatory fees in a number of years. So we've got our Johnson County resident. Next page is our Kansas residents. Their tuition went up $5 per credit hour. Out-of-state and international students went up $9 per credit hour. And then that last page there is our metro rate, and that went up $6 per hour. So on page 24, you'll see our required student fees per credit hour. So these fees are applied to every credit hour that students take. They have remained unchanged for a number of years. The last time we made a change was back in 2013. So they're holding steady there at those categories. You see, we have a student activity fee, a debt reduction fee, parking and roads fee, sustainability fee, which totals up to $16 per hour. And then on this next page, you'll see the per-course fee. So these are just for specific courses. These are developed by our instructional division. I don't believe there are any changes this year, but that's the total list of fees that we have for individual classes. Then moving on to page 26, and again, please feel free to stop me, there's some additional information for your reference on our credit hour fees. So in the gray, well, it's not gray on the screen, but in the book, it's gray, the 24-25 tuition rates that we have talked about already. And then you can compare us to KU, K-State, Metropolitan. So as you can see, we're still remain very competitive with our neighboring institutions. And there's about three more pages that follow that with the blue and yellow, and those are our other Kansas community colleges, and they're different residency categories. So there's a lot of information there that we pull from the Kbor Community College Survey. Here's a summary, though, and you can see, of all of the Kansas community colleges, we are second from the lowest. And we've been in that position for a few years, I believe. And I should note, this is all as of 23-24, because we don't have all the final information on the other schools yet.
I have just, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but when I was looking through this this afternoon, I noticed that our fees are significantly lower per credit hour than any of the other community colleges.
Wow. Okay. True statement.
Yeah.
All right. Just a couple of other informational pieces around our tuition rates. This page is, we pulled this from the College Board. It is a national look at two-year colleges. And we're pretty close to the bottom, in a good way, as far as our tuition rates. So there's a few states that are lower than us, but we remain in that bottom quarter as far as the cost per credit hour. And then finally, this last page has a little bit more information on our base operating grant from the state. So it's that yellow line, of course, and you'll see, this is 24, so 25 million, almost 26 million that we receive in our base operating grants that goes into the general fund. And then this is the number that we're, it's 900 roughly thousand lower this year that we're talking about the budget for. And I've got a more detailed explanation of that in the slide in the PowerPoint in just a bit.
Can we go back to the fees for a second? In our budgeting process, do we regularly seek the input of each of those entities that basically use the fees for their full funding and ask if they have a reason to need more or request more? I know sustainability is always one, that they use every drop of that and talk about it every year at the harvest dinner, but...
Right. We do, it's part of kind of the cabinet discussion of all of these things that comes up in cabinet every year, are there any fees that we need to discuss? And so I think each individual administrator would work with their areas to determine what they feel would be an appropriate increase.
And then I have a question on...
Sure.
...the tiered technical education state aid and then the non-tiered. What's the difference between tiered and non-tiered?
I believe, and I welcome corrections on this, but actually, I'm going to just turn it to Mickey. There's a lot of formulas and information, and they are experts on that.
Yeah. So to make it kind of in layman's terms, tiered are courses that the state has determined function primarily as career and tech ed program things that do not require a bachelor's degree and require either a certificate or an associate's, things that we can fully provide without a student having to transfer elsewhere. Any program that is deemed that the work that a student would be qualified to do would require a bachelor's degree then becomes non-tiered.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Because they only reimburse us for tiered coursework.
Okay. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. McLeod. Okay. Before I move on to the expense portion, do we have...
Sorry. That just prompted another question. What do you mean they only reimburse us for tiered?
We do not get a, so when you do, tiered and non-tiered is based primarily for early college students. So when a student takes a course that is tiered in the tiered funding, and they are a junior or senior at the high school level, we are reimbursed the cost of that student by the state in the same way that they do a per-pupil expenditure for the high school. If that same 16, 17, 18-year-old student came here to take a non-tiered course, that would not be reimbursed by the state. That cost would then be on the student.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. But we do get money for, sorry, what I was thinking, sorry about that, is we get money for tiered and non-tiered?
Yes.
From the state? I mean, that is the formula the state uses.
It is that the state pays for tiered coursework. Non-tiered coursework is paid for by the student.
So that prompted another question for me. So to the tiered technical education state aid, this certified or certification program, it's only for the juniors and seniors at high school that we're getting the money for from state for that, for how they're...
Primarily, it is for those students who are counted as high school students doing early college work. That is part of what was at the time called Senate Bill 155 back in 2013, 14. If you look up Senate Bill 155 after that, you will find that in 2018, they used that, they reused that number for a bill on medical marijuana. So it is a, so we still call it SB 155, but it's a misnomer because you will find the wrong thing if you go look it up.
All right. I'm going to cross that out.
Just a brief follow-up, if I may. I don't think there's any formula. Trustee Smith Everett said there's a formula. I think that's just the way it is.
It's just the way it is. It is our reimbursement, what we submit to the Board of Regents, a series of documents every year that calculates and accounts for every one of those students, and then we are reimbursed for that funding.
Because Dr. Sobchak used to ask our delegation and others for a formula or some coherent, recognizable way to handle community college funding, and I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I've learned something new, because I use SB 155 in some of my documentation, so thank you. All right. I'm about to move on to the expense portion of the book, so I just want to make sure there aren't any other revenue questions, burning questions I can answer or try.
No promises, but...
That's fine. And I've got more, again, in a PowerPoint, too. Okay. All right. So let's move on. We're on page 36, and this is the donut chart, I love those, about our expenses. So you can see the dark blue, the big chunk, that is salaries and benefits. So as is our norm, 76, well, 76% is personnel costs with salaries and benefits, followed up by 20% in our current operating, which is basically the money we use for supplies, materials, equipment, travel, reimbursements, things like that. I'm sorry, I said that backwards. It's the lighter color blue, the 19%, is current operating. Then we also have capital expenditures that make up about 3% of our expenditures, our budget expenditures, and then debt service, which pays back the debt that we have on some of our buildings. And that stands, that's a fixed amount every year, well, not fixed every year, but we know what that is every year, and that's about 2% of our expense budget. So this is, again, similar information, just shown in that 10-year trend, so you can take a look at that. As you can see, the percentages are fairly close. If you look at FY21 to FY23, that reflects, if you look at the bigger green, that was the planned expenditures we had for the science lab. That's why that's so much bigger, particularly in FY22. So we utilize some of our reserves. We planned to do that. But everything else, current operating, which is the kind of brightest blue, has remained pretty steady throughout the years. I think that shows those expenses are well-managed. They have not gone up a lot. And then, of course, salaries and benefits down there are the other two blues. And so that far right-hand column is the proposed budget we're discussing. Okay. So that, everything I was going to go over in the book, the second half of your book has very, very detailed reports on every single org, which are departments and functions, all of their expenditures. There's lists of our capital expenditures by item that are planned for next year. And then way in the back, there's some projection data on all of the different funds that's there for your reference. So with that, I think I'll move on to my summary PowerPoint, unless anyone has any burning questions at this point.
Any questions? It's all yours.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. So now that we've gone through the workshop book, this would be a good time to once again thank our Budget and Financial Services Department. I also wanted to give a shout-out to those, all those budget administrators all across campus that work on this budget. It's an undertaking, and they work on it, the people that help them out with that, cabinet priority... out to those, all those budget administrators all across campus that work on this budget. It's an undertaking, and they work on it, the people that help them out with that. Cabinet prioritizes it. There's a lot of work that goes into this, and I just want to express my appreciation across campus for everything that gets us to this point. Okay. All right, so to summarize, looking at general fund revenue, as we talked about, the county experienced assessed valuation growth of about 7%. After five-mil levy reductions in the past six years, except for that special assessment that we've already talked about, we are not recommending a mil levy reduction this year. That results in just shy of $8 million in incremental revenue coming into '24, '25. This will be in excess of the revenue-neutral rate. As in past years, we will require that hearing that we do in September, where we, and we publicize it, we advertise it ahead of time, and then we have that hearing for the public. Tuition and fees, as you approved in December, that contains that 4% increase in tuition rates across all the categories of residency. It includes 2% budget year over budget year enrollment growth as part of the assumption. That results in a total combined increase of 1.8 million. And for those of you that are curious, about 1.3 of that is due to the increase in tuition rates, and about $500,000 of that is due to the 2% increase in enrollment and how that calculates out. And then finally, state funding has been adjusted by that $900,000 to reflect the amount we know we're going to receive. This is only the tiered and non-tiered-based funding that we've already talked about. And then, in just a minute, I'll show you some detail about the other funding that we're going to get from the state. It's interesting. So, all right, if I move on to this page, this is just informational for you. For each mil that we levy, that brings in about $16 million. So accordingly, a half mil would be about eight. And for every 1% change in assessed valuation, it's just over $1 million that that changes our revenue, assuming a steady mil levy rate. Okay, so this is a little bit closer look at the mil levy. You can see it stays the same across at 8.1. We would need to reduce it by 8 million. Yeah, it will. So this is the amount that is going up from the last year's budget, just shy of $8 million. And so in order for us to have that revenue-neutral rate, we would need to reduce our budget by $8 million. So if I extrapolate what the revenue-neutral rate would be, it would be about a half mil lower than this. So we're not planning to do that, we're not recommending that, but I wanted you to be aware of what revenue-neutral rate would look like for us, should we, if we were to do that.
And Janelle, if you don't mind, just to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying, I'm pretty sure I do. Because of the assessed valuation going up, at the same mil levy, we get more money.
Right.
If we wanted to remain revenue-neutral, we would have to have the same budget that we had last year. So nothing gets increased.
Correct.
And that, then, would allow us to reduce the mil levy so that it compensates for the increase in valuation. And so that would mean that there would be no accounting for any inflationary cost increases that have occurred, because we'd have to spend the exact same amount of money in the coming year that we spent this past year. Do I have that right?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so I'm going to move on to...
Trustee Mitchell.
Sorry.
Quick observation, back to revenues and expenses. I've noticed that there is a little bit of a difference between budgeted revenues and expenses, about 1.3 million-ish. Does that money wind up going into a reserve fund?
It does. It does, yeah.
So reserves are not calculated as expenses, per se?
Correct. Correct. Great question. And you have about two slides. I'll show you that in a chart. But you're absolutely right. All right, I'm going to spend just a little bit talking about state aid. What we talked about earlier, that tiered and non-tiered, is up there at the top of that chart. So there's that 890,000, so just shy of 900,000 reduction from the year before. The middle section are career and tech ed capital outland technology grants that we get from the state, they require a match on our part. We don't know the exact numbers yet, but we're not expecting or anticipating much of a change, so I left it the same for this purpose. And then at the bottom are these buckets of money that we are receiving from the state for very specific purposes. So we can only spend them on certain things. So the top one there is cybersecurity funding. So the top two, actually, we received in this fiscal year, too. And at that time, we didn't know if they would be recurring or not, but it turns out these top two will, we will get them again. So the cybersecurity funding is 250,000, flat amount for each community college in the state. And so we've used that to do different things with our security and information services, and we are planning, or we will be receiving that this coming year. But they are restricted for that purpose. The second piece is the apprenticeship money, the business and industry money. We received just around 2.9 million in FY '24. We use that for things, a big part of it, we use to fund part of the CDL range in Edgerton. We've also used it for classroom renovations to support programs like machining technology, manufacturing, automotive tech, electrical tech, construction management, and a few other things. So it's been very, very good for those programs. We've been able to use that. We were pleased to find out we are going to receive it again, and it's actually just a slight amount higher, so 33,000 more in '24. So those things, instructional areas are already working on, you know, what are the priorities for those funds? So that was very good news. Another thing that we learned this year, which is new, is we're receiving three point, a little over 3.5 million that the state has designated to use for student success initiatives. So that's what we know, student success initiatives, and so there's a lot of different things we can use that on. Again, just like the apprenticeship money, the departments are working on how best to spend those. But just for an example, we're looking at possibly funding a CRM, customer relation, customer relationship management software system. Actually, it's in support of our strategic plan, but when we learned we were going to receive these funds, that would be a good place to use those funds on. So that's one small piece of it, but much more information to come on what we will be spending those funds on. That was really great. And then, kind of a last-minute add, we also learned we would be receiving 100,000 for deferred maintenance projects, and that's a flat amount for every Kansas Community College. We've heard possibly that would recur for a few years, maybe up to five, but we don't have that confirmed yet. But we do know we are receiving it next year.
So, Janelle, deferred maintenance would be things that we've put off?
Yes, I believe that's the intention. I don't know, I think we do a really great job here of keeping on top of our maintenance, but that maintenance, we'll work with Campus Services to decide how to spend that.
What would be some examples of deferred maintenance?
Those darn bricks. It's always the bricks.
Roof, roofs, sidewalks, HVAC, things like that.
Plumbing.
Yeah.
By comparison, what does KU and K-State have in deferred maintenance?
I don't know.
Probably tens of...
I was going to say, every year at K-Bor, when they discuss it, it is somewhere, it is somewhere over $20 million a piece of deferred.
It's more than that.
It's a lot of money.
And then they're building a brand-new gateway center with a tenure. It's my job to say stuff like this. So they have 100 million in deferred maintenance, and we're going to do 500 million on a new stadium. So just by way of background, we've gone out of the way to keep deferred maintenance down. We're rich or have more real estate wealth than most counties, so we work to do that. Whereas some of our partners and sister schools are not so fortunate. But I think for all the new people, you should be aware of that, and that we're privileged to do that, but that some of our stakeholders across the state are not so. And that's a big tension in the legislature. Just wanted to share that.
So there's some inequities.
What was that?
There's some inequities.
Yeah, these are my opinions, but yes.
It could go both ways, because there are inequities on the cybersecurity side, too, I would think. That'd be my opinion.
I don't know anything about that. What do you mean?
Well, I would think that our cost for cybersecurity would be in excess of most community colleges as of scale. It's a flat $250,000 per community college.
Well, we fight the battle of statewide mil levy, and so we pick our battles with these people. And they're our friends, they're our allies, but I just wanted to take the time to wax, be careful.
I just wanted to ask, can we get a copy of this? Because this is the really essential nuggets that I didn't see on SharePoint. I'd love to be able to review it, because you've extrapolated all the goods from this book into really succinct points. I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Caitlin said, she just nodded, she'll send it out.
Thank you.
And I will say, it's hot off the presses, so we've been...
Advice to the last minute, yeah.
Happy to share it with you. Okay, so I guess I'll end this slide by saying, if you see at the bottom, our total funding is about 9.5% higher than last year. However, I want to just caution, not all of these funds recur year after year. So it's good for the coming year. Okay, so this is, this is just description. I've already talked through all this. I just couldn't fit it all on one slide. I'll let you take a look at that. But that's basically a summary of all those funding sources. Moving over to the expense side of the equation, this first is to take a look at salaries and benefits. So in the budget that's being presented, there is a 3% placeholder for across-the-board compensation increases. That's about 2.9 million. So that, of course, is pending results of faculty negotiation and the board approval on those, on that piece of information. It also includes benefit cost increases for medical, our portion of medical, payroll taxes, employer 403B, et cetera, at about 2.3 million. Those are already included in the numbers. And then I do want to point out, our total budgeted positions remains flat at about 1,374. So what you see there is the year we're in, the different employee categories. It doesn't include part-time temp employees, part-time adjunct, or student employees. I did want to point that out. So all told, we're closer to 2,000 employees, but that's where we stand on these numbers. So I also want to say, even though we aren't adding any positions, we do reallocate them between categories and to different departments as needs change and positions are vacated. They typically go back into a pool, and then we evaluate as needs change in different areas. So we, the positions hold steady in total, but they do get used for different, different things. A little more on the expenses. In operating, we have about 110,000 to support strategic goals. I also want to mention, we talked about the CRM system, that, where are you going to utilize those state funds for? That also came out of a strategic planning initiative and will help support the plan. And we included operational increases of about 3 million in our current operating line, which supports increases in costs in goods, services, equipment, travel, all of that good stuff. Under capital, got a few items I wanted to point out. We've got what we consider are high-priority remodel requests. So we ask campus-wide what remodels are needed for different areas, and then they're prioritized. And there are 738,000 in there, and those are all detailed, if you want to see that, in the back of the book in the capital schedule. So those are things like office renovations, classroom renovations outside of active learning. Active learning classrooms, we've been doing this project for a number of years. I think we have completed, yeah, 45 classrooms will be renovated by the end of the summer. So we're doing another round of those. We typically allocate $1 million a year. Instruction goes through a prioritization process on which classrooms they want to renovate to these new active learning standards. So the plan is to continue to work through that till about 2028, is what I'm understanding. The plan is to complete all of those.
Do you have any idea how many classrooms we have that would be eligible for this?
Good question.
I thought the goal was to do about half of the classrooms, so we would end up at around 70 or 75?
Yeah, that's correct. Eligibility depends upon several factors, both departmental use, but also size, because it requires specific square footage per student to be able to move around to create active learning space. We had capped ourselves out at needing roughly half of our general classrooms to be at, in this mode, because that is what we then have faculty interested in utilizing. So that's kind of maximizing use.
Which equates to 70 actual rooms.
70 to 72 actual rooms.
And we'd be able to do that by 2028, double what we've done?
No, the difference between 72 and 45 would be what we would do between now and 2028.
Yeah, it's typically five or six a year, depending on...
We tend, yeah, we tend to do six. Six per academic year is what we've been able to budget for at this point. We have had years where we've had to go down to four or five based on structural issues or technology costs that have shifted. And so we've had to kind of lower the number of rooms to stay within budget in some years in the past.
Okay. All right, and then the third piece I wanted to point out under our capital expenditures is a replacement of our, it's called a unified communication system. That's basically our phone system, but I'm assured by Rob, I'm not sure if he's here, I haven't looked. It's way more than a phone system, that's what I've been told. But the situation is, our phone system is about 13 years old, and we're getting to the point where we either have to replace all the hardware or go a different direction. So we've budgeted in this coming year for the unified, I have to look, unified communication system replacement. And you'll hear actually more about this next month, because the recommendation for the vendor is coming through the procurement report next month in preparation for the coming fiscal year. So there's a little over a million. Most of that is one-time, because it's implementation fees, and we'll be replacing the costs that we have been spending on our old system. So I think it's a pretty exciting project, from what I've heard. All right, so here's your 1.3, great math. So this is just the overview of everything we've talked about. And you can see that this does, if I can get my mouse to work, this does end up with about a 1.3 contribution to reserves, and that's as the budget currently stands. So in our eyes, that's a balanced budget, because 1.3 is like less than 1% of our total budget. So we get close to that. So that's where we're landing right now with everything we've discussed.
Janelle, can you take just a minute? I know over the years, the dialogue about reserves has sort of been a pendulum swing. Can you take just a minute to explain the importance of our reserve fund, why it's there? Because it's not just a rainy day fund, it serves other functions as well. Can you kind of talk about why we want to keep our reserves at a reasonable place?
Yes. I don't have a chart in here to show you, but by policy, and Rachel will correct me if I say any of this wrong, by policy, we must have, is it 25 or 50?
25.
25% of our expenditure budget in reserves at any given time. And the thing to keep in mind is our revenues, the big chunks of our revenue come in mainly in January and in the summer, I believe. And so December is very much our low point, and so we can't drop below that 25%, because we need that, basically, that cash flow to pay our expenses. So at some times, it grows a little bit, and then we do a planned reduction like we did on the science labs. But that would be more of kind of that project that comes up. But in general, and it's in every month's treasurer's report, too. There's a little chart, and you can see the line, and it has to be above 25% of our expenditure budget every year.
And does the state of our reserves also have an impact on our bond rating?
Absolutely does.
And how does that, how does that, then, affect the financial well-being of the institution?
Great question. It does, as a matter of fact. And in fact, last year, in 2023, we were rerated by two bond agencies, Moody's and S&amp;P Standard and Poor's. And one of them, actually, our rating went up. And the higher the bond rating, the lower our borrowing costs. So they do take a look at that. There's a lot of ratios, but they want to make sure, basically, we can pay our bills. And so you're absolutely right, maintaining those healthy reserves helps us maintain good financial ratios and keeps our borrowing costs lower when and if the time comes to do another bond issuance.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to say, congratulations on the improved bond ratings to everyone. It's kind of a deal. She's laughing. Look at that, she's smiling.
Great news.
It was a good day.
Thank you.
It was a good day. Yeah. All right, so that, let me just talk you through next steps, and then we'll see what questions you might have, if any. So if you remember back on the calendar, all these things are laid out there. So next month, we bring forward what we call the management budget, and that, the budget is not finalized until the fall, and there's a couple of reasons for that. It, we need to do the... We need to do the revenue neutral rate hearing, and then we also do a normal budget hearing for the community to come and listen to and make comments and all of that. And by statute, particularly the revenue neutral rate, has to be done between August 20th and September 20th. So I believe the planned board dates are in the packet this month, and so our September board meeting falls in that range, so that's when we'll bring this back. But in May, we'll bring you a recommendation to adopt the management budget. So that means you'll adopt what's presented, or whatever the vote you decide. And then we can, and sometimes do make changes before the official, what we call the legal budget, happens in the fall, but we like to get as close to finalized as we can. So we'll bring that to the May management and finance, and then the recommendation to adopt the management budget will be next month's board meeting for your vote. Then in September, we will have the hearings, as we talked about. Then you'll vote for the final budget, and then we complete a lot of things behind the scenes and submit that to the state and the county to do the assessments on our taxes and all of that.
Would it be fair to say that the reason we have to adopt the management budget in May is because the new fiscal year starts the 1st of July, and we have to be able to operate with some certainty and efficiency, and that's the reason for that timeline?
Yep, that's absolutely the truth. And it also has to do with our cash basis budget laws in the state of Kansas, so we have to have that approved management budget to begin doing business July 1.
You like how you're reliving all those softball games we used to watch, right?
Yeah.
You're doing a great job fielding those, I appreciate that. Thank you.
They're good questions. All right, so that's the end of my prepared comments that I have, so let me see if you have any questions?
Mine is rather general, I wonder if you looked at me, you just knew. Mine is rather general, I feel like I need to channel my best Greg Muesel to just take a moment to get on a soapbox to say the, and I'm trying to find it, which of course I can't now, the page that shows the contribution by the state decreasing year over year while our taxpayers, our local taxpayers, incur the burden of funding the school, is frankly, in a year with the surplus, budget surplus the state is enjoying, is, it's appalling. And it's really frustrating and demoralizing for educational institutions in a state to be told that there is no money for them to support the next generation of Kansans. Meanwhile, we're up on podiums preaching about how young people are leaving the state, and we don't make the investments we need for institutions to be well-equipped to educate them and keep them here. And so, channeling my best Greg Muesel, I just wanted to say that. I wanted to say, the other thing I bring up every year is that I read the history of JCCC when I was running the very first time, and in that history of JCCC, a riveting read, if you want some nighttime reading, they talked in the 70s, over and over and over, about the funding being a three-legged stool, and that that was the entire vision of how community colleges were going to be funded. And we now have a two-legged stool and a broken third leg, and it creates a situation where at some point, this is not sustainable, and our local taxpayers are basically fully funding our community college. And I just wanted to make that case, because every year, that number that our local taxpayers incur gets bigger, and the state's contribution finds a way to get smaller despite the abundance we currently have in the state coffers. So with that, those are my comments, and I will sit over here and politely hush.
No, I actually, thank you for that, and I couldn't agree more. I recall back to when I first sat on this board, and that three-legged stool was much more of a three-legged stool. And the burden of funding this incredibly important institution was divided fairly equally between the state, the students, and the local taxpayers. And I echo the concern that our community is footing more and more of that bill. I sometimes sense that the folks in Topeka sort of have this philosophy, well, you've got it, right? Because you're Johnson County. And it is a growing concern, certainly, we don't want our students to have to foist any more of the burden. Higher education is becoming unreachable for so many of our young people, and so we need to continue to knock on the doors of our legislatures and make sure that they're making education a priority. As we so often say, in this institution, education changes lives, not just for us, but for generations to come. And we have to figure out a way to make sure that our young people are getting the education that they need to continue to grow our community. So I agree with your comments, and thank you, very well said. Any other questions or comments?
I think the chart you were looking for was, was it page 13?
Yes.
Is that what it is? Yeah, I was looking, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
For your tutorial and your grace in our somewhat silly questions sometimes, but you give us so much of a better understanding of what's in the book, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we are ready then to move on to awards and recognitions. Are we ready for that, Dr. Corb?
We are.
And first up is the student spotlight, and I'll let you take it away.
Okay.
Well, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Megan Perez. Megan is our student spotlight tonight. I had a chance, as I always do, just to meet the student for a little bit, and great conversation with Megan, and she's so looking forward to this tonight.
Yes, we know.
And so we are so happy to have her, but Megan, no, you've got a great story. You come and talk to us, please.
I took her, just ignored it.
It's okay, I told you.
Okay, so I guess we'll just start with what led me here. I had always planned on being a teacher. When I was in high school, I actually toured Emporia, and life got in the way. Married young, had kids, husband joined the Navy, we moved way far away. I had jobs as a class aide, I homeschooled my kids. One day, I saw on the news, the Kansas Promise, and I was like, oh, I can do that. And I applied, and then I enrolled, and then I started, within a week. It was like so easy and so fast, and I just like, I don't even know how to explain it, it was just like, phew, and I was just doing it. And it was really so easy, even though it's terrifying when you're like 33, and you're like, I'm going to do this brand-new thing that I have never, ever done before. I did my classes, I'm graduating in May, and I'm starting Emporia three days later with their fast track, and I'll do Gen Ed and Sped. I work right now as a SLC para for Broken Arrow and Shoney Mission, which is why I'm doing Sped in the first place, I love it so much. So that's kind of like a quick recap of like what led me here, and it's really, it's very daunting, especially when you go to class and you're with like a bunch of 19- and 20-year-olds who have no life experiences like yours at all. But the staff and counselors have really made it so easy, like it just, it takes a whole weight off, because sometimes you kind of feel like, who am I going to talk to? Kind of like, who's going to help me, because my experience is so different, and there's not necessarily other people that you can talk to, or that can kind of guide you, because they don't have the same experience. But it's really just been like a weight off my shoulders, just knowing that I have like the support here, and it's just all been made really, really easy.
Thank you for sharing your story. First, I'll ask if there are any comments from my fellow trustees, and then I have some things to say. Trustee Jennings.
I just want to say thank you for sharing this story, your passion, your excitement, and the need we have in education, in K-12 education, for people just like you, who have had good experience, know what they want to do, and they're going in the direction that they know will be able to make a difference. And as a special educator, I am so happy that you're going in that direction, because it's a need and a want for so many people, and thanks, I'm going to say. And Emporia is a great institution.
Trustee Ratan.
You have three kids, so are you involved in any, you said three kids?
I have two.
Two kids. I heard 33, three, it all. Are you involved in any clubs here at the institution? There might be a lot of juggle clubs as well as...
It is, but I do it anyways. So I do the honors program, and that's been really great, like as far as like even in other classes, because like now I know a different way of thinking or approaching things. But I'm also an ambassador for the Center for Future Educators. So it's like, I don't know if anybody knows it, it's very new. So most time, I get the answer like, no, what is it? So we, it's kind of like a full circle, we connect the bridge between high school to here, and let them know their options, and then here to their four-year institution. But then also, as we're, I don't want to say guiding, but like providing the opportunities and showing them different outcomes that they can reach, but also then leading them back to institutions that they can work in once they graduate.
Love that. And then my final question is, are you going to do the Emporia State locally? Because you can finish your Emporia, your degree at Emporia here in Kansas City.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I do want to say, if I can add, that this week, I did just learn about that. Our college, along with Emporia State, hosts Buzz Into Education every year, and they had about 300 high schoolers come here for a full day of workshops, and they were all future educators this weekend, and it was a really nice sight to see, the great partnership that ESU has with JCCC, and I hope that it continues, and good to see someone taking advantage of it. Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
I just want to say, Megan, thank you for being here, and I have three little brothers, two of whom were Marines, and when they got out of the Marine Corps after the Iraq War, they came here, and one is now an officer in the Navy, in the Missile Defense Agency. So I just wanted to say kudos to you as a military family for going through all that. Thank you.
So I have a whole bunch of stuff I could say, but I think I'd like to have coffee with you sometime, because there's a lot I'd like to talk to you about. Couple of things I wanted to observe, though. The first is that reinventing yourself will pay dividends, not only for you, but for the example that you're setting for your children as well, so that they have the understanding, and for your students, so that they have the understanding that you can be whatever it is that you decide you want to be at any point in your life, it just takes desire and perseverance. And kudos to you that you chose education. You know, in our society, we've reached a point where it is becoming increasingly difficult to find and keep quality K-12 educators. There's a number of reasons for that, but people who have the passion to be in the classroom and teach kiddos, and especially do Sped, man, we need you, because that's our tomorrow, right? And so, kudos to you and Emporia State, it's a great program we have in partnership with them, as trustee Ratan said, and I know that we integrate pretty well with the high school communities as well, to try to get more people into the field, but tremendous accomplishments. Thank your husband for his service as well, and gosh, I hope you love your career, and I hope you change lives for years to come, because that's what it's all about. So thanks for sharing your story with us. It wasn't that bad, right?
As long as I don't. I know. It's good.
You're all good, you're all good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was interesting, Megan didn't really think she had much of a story, and after I talked to her, I was like, oh, yes, you do. You need to come and talk to us. But another thing that was a little bit interesting about that is that she saw Kansas Promise, from a marketing perspective, she saw Kansas Promise, but she's not part of Kansas Promise. That's how she saw Johnson County Community College, and then she enrolled, and that isn't even, so that was kind of interesting to me, too. So thank you, Megan, appreciate you being here.
Yes, you can go now.
I know, I told her, I told her she didn't have to stay.
Thank you.
No, long suffering.
Okay, I think we have an award.
We do, and so at this time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Ben Conrad, and let him share the information and the award.
Somehow, these microphones are always too tall for me, and I've got to bring them down. Good thing I don't really need them. I wish I was here, I'm glad I'm here for this reason, I wish I was here with my team, and I wish we would have made a few more free throws and won a national championship two weeks ago, but we didn't quite get that done, but I am, it was a great year, we went 34-1, and ran the table all the way until the last night of the season. It was a really special season, but I am extremely excited to be here for the reason that I'm here, and that is to honor a very special young lady. My assistant coach has always been a part-time position for years and years and years and years, and this young lady was a part-time assistant for three years at Johnson County Community College. She played for me, I recruited her out of Baldwin, so she played, went to Colorado State and played, came back, was a part-time assistant, kind of paid her dues for a few years, and then we actually had full-time assistant position come open two years ago. And you'll get the moral of the story I'm going at right now here in a second, but she didn't get the job, okay, she didn't get the job. And one of the things we talk a lot about with our players when they play here is, I don't, we don't totally know who we are as a team until we've gone through some adversity. You know, we talk about, we don't really know what kind of team we have until we get punched in the mouth as a team, and that's when we find out what we're made of. And when things happen that maybe you're not, maybe not fair, maybe not excited about, or maybe you just get beat, you have a really rough night. And so I always, I had an incredible amount of respect. Katie went back to, went to Lamar, and was the director of operations for a year there, and then our job came back open last year, and she had, went away for a year, I thought, learned a lot, and came back as a totally different candidate last spring, when we were, when this position opened again, and she got the job this time. And so it's a lesson in perseverance, it's a lesson in how you handle adversity, and it's a lesson in character, in my opinion. And so, it's very, very proud of her as a player, and what she's become, and her coming back to Johnson County. It's a success story for our college. And she was recently named the WBCA National Assistant Coach of the Year at our level, which is a huge award, and I will tell you just how big it is. I've had a few other coaches that we've nominated for it, and they didn't even get in the finalist pool. And so for her to get that, it's a huge deal, very, very, very excited about that. And I want to introduce you guys to my former player and my assistant coach, Katie Jones. Somebody gave the last speaker permission to leave, so do we need to get the permission to leave, too?
Not just yet.
Okay, yeah.
Comments, trustee Cross.
No, I don't, thank you. I'd like to hear from Ms. Jones.
Yeah, I would as well. I know that you've been sitting back there waiting to walk up to the microphone.
I warned her.
Yeah, I just want to thank Ben, obviously, bringing me back. Johnson County is home to me, so that was really fun to come back for that, but I mean, I enjoy every moment with our kids, it's what I do. Ran in my family, my grandpa coached for a long time, so kind of just what I've been built to do, but like I said, Johnson's been home to me, so it's good to come back. This is a tremendous award, I had a lot of fun up in Cleveland at the Final Four, where they presented it with me, but like I said, I'm just ready to keep going for the, bringing new kids in here, having them experience what I got to experience, and keep going.
Well, thanks for joining us today. You know, I just want to make a brief observation, just because I guess I like to talk tonight. You deal with student athletes every day, and you know what a difference it made in your life, and so you're trying to impart that now to those student athletes. And we have seen, over the past month, unless you've been living under a rock, just how incredibly important a student athlete can be in bringing awareness to people who never thought they'd be watching women's college basketball, right? And how we can just get people to rally around a cause in the name of athletics, and so keep doing what you're doing. And so keep doing what you're doing. And just never forget how important it is for your students and really for our society, what student athletics can do. So thank you so much. And for having the perseverance and for coming back. And next year, bring home the championship, right?
That's the goal.
All right. Anything else?
You didn't ask for comments. I was going to say, please rebound.
I'm sorry.
No one rebounds anymore and boxes out old school, but it's okay.
Nobody boxes out anymore.
Nobody boxes.
She heard you. She heard you.
Please make sure they keep boxing out and rebounding. I hate fadeaway shots.
Those offensive rebounds, man, they kill you.
A great season.
Thank you. That is all of our awards and recognitions. I don't think Apuna is here, so.
Next on the agenda is the Open Forum, however. And I have to read this statement, right? So the Open Forum section of the Board Agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the Board. There will be one Open Forum period during each regularly scheduled Board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the Chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled Board meeting. When addressing the Board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise the subject of review by the college or Board. There are no registered speakers for the Open Forum section of tonight's Board Agenda. And so we've now dispensed with that. Thank you. Student Senate, and Apuna, I believe, is not here. So we'll look forward to her comments next month. The next item on the agenda is college lobbyist. Mr. Dick Carter was also not able to attend, but his report is contained in the information for tonight's meeting. So I would encourage everybody to review that. And that takes us to the report from College Counsel and Jason Arnett, who I see is here.
What did you ask, Madam Chair? Sorry.
I'm sorry?
Did you ask me something?
I was distracted.
We were talking. I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, you're good.
I could brief you.
You just got busted. No, for not paying attention.
I'll distract everybody and give my report.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. It'll become important in a minute. But I want to remind everybody that I do work for Dining Services in my day job. And the Buzz Into Learning kids were really great when they came through the food court this week. So they were perfect. So anyway, College Counsel met last Wednesday, April 10. Our counseling office is, as always, very, very busy with appointments. Their appointments with advisors are three weeks out now at this point. The office is encouraging students to make appointments rather than having them walk in so they can be better served and their advisors are much better prepared to meet with them. So hopefully, students are getting that message. It seems that they are. Academic Branch Counsel is winding down for the year with their last meeting coming up next week. Is that right? Yep. And then in our College Counsel meeting, Barry Bailey shared with us an early draft of a survey tool that is being developed that could be used to report the state of shared governance to the college and could be useful among all the councils so that we would be able to get a pulse of how we're doing our jobs with shared governance in relation to certain issues. More on that as we get more and more into it. We just, it was a very first draft. It was very entertaining at one point, so. Staff Counsel is continuing to work on their Town Hall. We don't know when that's going to happen. Bunch of scheduling issues. But elections are coming up in June with one-third of the seats needing to be filled. And a small number of people are not running. So we're going to have some new representatives in Staff Counsel in July. And Staff Counsel also initiated a new program that they're calling High Fives, which is a recognition of work that Staff Counsel thinks is important to know about. I'm so glad that Coach Jones was here because she was one of the people that we wanted to call out and recognize. Because in Staff Counsel, we were made aware that she was Coach of the Year, which is yay, great. And the second High Five that we're reporting here goes to, and I may be biased in this one, but goes to Dining Services. Because a couple of Wednesdays ago, on April 3, we had 300 BNSF students and 300 Model UN students on campus. They all descended on the food court at the same time. And descended is the right word. Horde of Locusts also worked. But they all came in. And then we had all of our regular faculty, staff, and students who were coming through that day. And a shout out to my team, who did a phenomenal job of getting everybody through. They all got hot food, got sat down. The best thing was we didn't have any spills. Nobody dropped a drink with all those people coming through. It was the busiest day Dining Services has had this year. And I just want to make sure that the cashiers, the line servers, the cooks, the dishwashers, and the team that keeps the dining room clean are recognized because they did a phenomenal job that day. And then finally, in our work of trying to align all the processes of the councils, we made some significant strides this week. We had a great meeting with Dr. McLeod on our summary of his definition of shared governance. And we're a lot closer to having something to be able to share, we hope, in August. And we're going to have some changes. There were some changes from that meeting, but we'll spread those out to ABC and Staff Counsel. We'll get to review all of that pretty soon. And then we also got to review what we believe is going to be a very important document about the structure of councils, committees, and task forces on campus that John Clayton shared with us. We went through it with a fine-tooth comb, gave him a lot of great suggestions. He seemed very enthusiastic. So, John, you're here. Thank you. It was a great meeting. We really appreciate that. And, you know, we're just trying to make sure that shared governance is a solid process and very transparent for everybody on campus because we want to make sure that their voices are heard. So that's all I have for you this month.
Thanks, Jason. Comments or questions from the Board? And this time, I'm going to make eye contact with everyone. Because I apologize that you were overlooked. Anything at all?
I just have to say something about the food service. As a daughter of someone who spent most of my childhood being a food service manager of some kind and handling those kind of crowds, one of the things I learned over the years is that food and the way someone encounters a place is often done in those settings. And they, it's one of the funny things about, you know, those kind of experiences is you have a whole day planned and workshops. And oftentimes, those communal times with new friends and a new place and food create the memory and the conversation that makes a big difference. So thank you for being ambassadors for our institution. And please relay back our thanks to every person who washed every dish or had a mop ready that didn't even need to be used and was ready to serve with a smile and the grace that we want everyone to experience here. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We selfishly believe we're very important to the college experience.
You are. You absolutely are.
Trustee Ratan.
I'm on the College Counsel, and I just want to say thanks for your leadership. I appreciate you, and it's quite informative.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I appreciate it. And it's nice to have everybody who's so participatory in the whole process. So we're, I think we get stronger every year. So I'm very, very pleased with where we're going with College Counsel. So thank you.
Anyone else? Jason, how many people on average do you serve in a regular day?
So right now, we are averaging somewhere between 780 and 860 people a day.
So that's a lot, but on that particular...
Oh, that's just in the food court. I'm sorry.
Right, the food court.
Yeah.
So that's a lot, but on that particular day, you nearly doubled that, then.
Yeah, we did about, we did almost 1,500 transactions that day, yeah.
That's amazing. And kudos to you and your team. You mentioned something about reviewing the various councils, committees, and task forces that are around campus. I sometimes find that those things can kind of grow a life of their own. And then somebody starts asking, why do we have this committee again? Is that going to be part of that exercise, do you think?
Yeah, I think the, everything will be better defined and better accounted, there'll be more accountability for each group.
That sounds terrific.
Yeah.
Eliminate redundancy and increase efficiency would be awesome, so.
We can only hope.
Yeah. Thank you, as always, Jason, for coming to the podium. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That takes us to the Faculty Association Report. And Andrea, are we going to get to hear from you tonight? All right.
All right. Hello, my name is Andrea View, and I am the President of the JCCC Faculty Association. We recently held elections for next year's FA Officers and sadly will be stuck with me for another year. I will be President one more year. I do want to say, taking on the Vice President's role is Irene Olivares in History, who I believe some of you met last October when she was here giving the Board Report. And then probably some of you also met her at some enchanted evening as she was one of our attendees at that event. The Secretary will be Danny Alexander in English. And he was here last month with the honors group, so you might remember him from that. Lisa Parrott in Business Administration will be next year's Treasurer. I don't quite think many of you have met Lisa Parrott. She was at the New Faculty Orientation last August. And then we do have plans to maybe get her in front of you all sometime next fall, ideally. And then Amanda Glass in Chemistry, who you have definitely met, will be our, what we call Uniserve representative. And Brett Cooper, of course, will be remaining as our past President. So we have a really good bunch. Some of our people are more established faculty. And then some of our people are kind of newer faculty. So it's a kind of a nice mix of institutional memory and also new ideas. I also want to say a big thanks to Dave Krug, who is rolling off of the Executive Committee as the Treasurer. He will be on sabbatical next fall. So it just kind of seemed like the right time for him to kind of take a step back and take a hiatus from all of us. And, you know, take the sabbatical opportunity that this college provides, basically. We want to really thank him for his commitment to the college and its employees and his leadership and the Faculty Association all these past years. One thing I'm particularly excited about in the coming years for us is that we have a goal to continue to be an active partner with the college, its faculty, and its staff administration. Sometimes it might have felt that faculty administration were at odds. And I think that can at times be normal and natural. But what we as a team have discussed is how can we continue to grow in our roles and view ourselves as partners with this institution and its administration? We also care about things like faculty engagement and bolstering a collaborative culture, which I believe is an interest we share with the larger institution. So it could be that in the past, there were certain perceptions about the FA such that it would make folks uncomfortable to think about us collaborating with the institution on shared ideas and goals. But I just don't think that's the way we ought to view ourselves. We have lots of point of commonality and shared interests. And these last couple of years have shown that we can work together and we can be partners. So I do really look forward to the coming years and are continuing to work together to kind of whatever comes our way. A bit of pivot to my favorite topic, inflation. I do want, I think we all know inflation's been an issue. Obviously, it came up when we were talking about the budget and the cost, you know, the cost of materials, for example. So according to the U.S. Inflation Calculator, average inflation in 2021 was 4.7%. It was 8% in 2022, 4.1% in 2023. And currently, it's over 3% for 2024. That, of course, totals to almost 20%. And that's really just an average. When we look at the cost of living in this county, in Johnson County, it's 8% higher than the national average to live in this county. So to fully understand this, I went to MIT's Living Wage website for Johnson County, Kansas. And for a family of four with two working adults, a living wage in this county is $112,516. So that's two kids, two working adults. According to the Kansas City Business Journal, for a family of four to live comfortably in Kansas City, they would need to make $213,325. So those are kind of just some, you know, just thinking about the cost of living in this county. A lot of the inflationary costs and, you know, costs of living is related to increased food costs as well as increased housing costs. So, long story short, in the big picture, it's expensive to live here, right? It's hard to recruit people. It's hard to retain people. It's hard for our employees to live in the county that they serve. And so that's a big concern for us in terms of how do we recruit and retain the best and the brightest? Can the people that we're trying to bring here to work at this college and maintain our high-quality education? Can they even, can we even bring them here due to some of these concerns about the cost of living here? Okay, I will skip to now some closing good news that you've already heard. So you're welcome for that. There have been two very large events on campus recently that have brought a lot of high school students. So Dr. Brian Wright, as you all know, is the advisor for the JCC Model UN team. And just recently, they hosted like 300 to 400 high school students from about 24 different high schools in a Model United Nations simulation. His students learn what they have learned from, they attend Model UN simulations around the country, and then they come back and make their own, they create their own simulation for our local high school partners so that our local high school students can also participate in that kind of, that kind of event. So, and then earlier this week, as Trustee Ratan was talking about, was the Buzz Into Education event that Dr. Craig Butler works with Emporia State to host. And that brought about 300 area high school students in. That partnership basically helps build pathways into careers in education, like we were hearing about with our Student Spotlight, and a seamless transition between us and Emporia State. So students kind of are able, as you pointed out, to get to stay around here in Kansas City and complete their degree. And that's it.
Thank you, as always, for your comments. Any questions or comments from my fellow Board members? I, for one, am very glad that you're going to be back for another year. I think I'm speaking for the Board in saying that. So we look forward to spending another year with you. And I look forward to our next coffee chat to talk about these numbers about what's a livable wage and what's a comfortable wage. I have some thoughts about that, but that's for another day.
I will email you and set up a time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, next up is our JCert report, and Trustee Smith-Ever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have an update with updated numbers except for the fact that I got the invitation for my first JCert meeting, which will be this coming Monday, April 22, at 8:00 a.m. And it will be held at the University of Kansas Clinical Research Center on John and Mission Parkway. I look forward to bringing back information, updated numbers for you in the May meeting. And that concludes my report.
Awesome. Any questions or comments for Trustee Smith-Ever? All right, here.
Better not be.
Did you have something?
Say good job. Say good job.
Next up, Trustee Cross, who has been just chomping at the bit to say something, I know, with our KACC report. Go right ahead.
No, really not. Other than, did we miss Dick Carter? I barely pay attention, so is he not here?
He's not here this evening.
Okay. He told me to come tonight, and then he doesn't show up. That's funny.
I believe he had something unexpected come up.
Well, somebody had to show up. Yes, Madam Trustee, thank you. The KACC met in April for the, we met in person in Junction City at the Gary County Convention Center for our annual PTK Honors Banquet. And around 200 attendees gathered. I couldn't make it. I apologize. But I know we were represented by Dr. Gert. Was there? Is that right? Just seeing if he still hears my voice. Students were honored for their outstanding scholastic achievement. One student spoke eloquently about their positive community college experiences. Heather Morgan, our executive director, gave the keynote speech about 16 goals to live by. A special recognition speech was given by Kansas House of Representatives member from the 116th District, Kyle Hoffman, who recognized retiring Presidents Kim Kroll from Butler and Carter File from Hutchinson Community College, where my wife went. Also retiring are President Deb... Also retiring are President Deb Fox from Highland and Carl Heilman from Barton County Community College. Highlights have noted, I'm not going to read this whole thing Heather Morgan wrote me because it's long, but other highlights were after the PTK banquet, banquet, the presidents and trustees met for a quarterly KACC business meeting, minutes and financials were approved, and I'm happy to send this on to you, but I wanted to note that an MOU has been signed between Fort Hays and other, and all the community colleges that allow any student who graduates with an associate's degree in nursing to receive automatic admission to the Fort Hays State Nursing Program. Is that accurate, Dr.?
It is.
Very cool.
Well, that's good. I, my mother grew up near Hays, and that's the only reason Jerry Moran speaks to me. The next item I wanted to note was multiple letters have been sent to K-Board to express concern that they have recently voted to allow Pittsburgh State, and it is now proposed to allow Wichita State to start or expand awarding associate degrees, which has traditionally been the role of the community colleges. And I think that's great, we should offer four-year degrees and just have a total war over this issue.
Yep.
And we're uniquely situated on a state line in, I believe, the 29th MSA in the country, so, I mean, good for them.
He's kidding, he's kidding.
I'm not. Next point is Heather Morgan provided the group with maybe legislative update. Representative Kyle Hoffman, again, sat in on the meeting and provided additional commentary. There's a whole host of things that I'm going to skip for brevity's sake, although apparently now there's a bill that allows certification for elevator inspectors. This is for elevators like in buildings or just for farm purposes?
No, this is building elevators. Everybody got confused because Seward's program is actually for grain elevators, and they thought that that was the one. That's not, they're talking about a shortage of human-moving elevator. We have a shortage of technicians right now in the state, so everybody's waiting two or three weeks to get somebody out to fix their people.
No, I think it's great, I'm not trying to be a little anybody, I think it's great that we show the community in the market, frankly, the utility we provide, so I think that's great. Previously, a community college could not work with a fire marshal to establish this training to allow more people to enter the workforce to address the shortage of qualified technicians, and apparently now we can, but it is waiting the governor's signature veto before it's allowed to become law. Heather then discussed the budget and where things currently stand for community colleges. There's a number of items here, including some, some new money that was fully funding SB 155, and other items we've talked about tonight, including the 2.6 million to provide each community college and technical college, $100,000 to help with deferred maintenance. All these funds are intended to be ongoing, except potentially the new cybersecurity funding. I mean, who says that? Who says all this is intended to be ongoing?
That's the question.
It's Heather's opinion here, she wrote.
It's Heather's opinion that it's considered to be ongoing. She believes that she has gotten some confirmation from some legislators that that is the legislative intent, that has not been confirmed yet.
I mean, it's good news, it's just, I've been around, you know? It sounds like political jockeying, and, am I interpreting that?
I would argue, yeah.
So somebody says that now, so in two years, if we have a change in administration, it's some pressure that somebody can say, hey, we said, but now they don't want to. Okay. I just want to make sure I was following, so Laura Smith-Everett knows I'm paying attention. It was announced in April, that April is, excuse me, it was announced that April is community college month, so please promote this at your college. And then also it was announced that the next KACC meeting will be May 31st and June 1st, hosted by Butler Community College at their Andover Campus, starting for trustees at 3:00 p.m. on May 31st and ending at 11:30 on June 1st. Presidents will have a dinner Thursday evening, and meetings with Heather will be also on May 31st. So, that concludes my report. I thank Heather Morgan for the report, just so Molly Baumgartner, when she's watching this, knows who wrote that, and I'll answer any questions if you have.
Questions, comments?
Thank you to the legislature for the new money.
Thank you for the new money, yeah. Just for clarification, do I remember that this Pittsburgh State University Associate's Degree Issue, that's related to classes that we encourage people to take at their transfer institution because they won't transfer from here, so that then means they can't get an associate degree from us? Do I have this right?
No, that is, that is different.
Okay.
What you're referring to is our ability to reverse transfer degrees for students. That is not this. About 10 months ago, the Board of Regents issued a, a writ that the universities should all work with Georgia State University, which right now is working on what they call the National Institute for Student Success, to be housed there. As part of what they call the NISS playbook, it was given as a, an approach to help with retention that universities start to offer associate's degrees as stop-out degrees for students who come to them as native students but do not finish their bachelor's degrees. If they achieve more than 60 hours with the correct mix, they can then be awarded an Associate of General Studies. Their provost at Pitt State, when this was proposed, equated it to gamification of education, and that we have a generation of students who need levels that they can climb, and that this is a way to award them for completing a level, which then keeps them engaged in the game, so to speak, to continue the metaphor. We spoke out against it, finding it ironic that for years we have touted the importance of the associate degree as a community college sector with regard to its ability to raise a person's standard, help them understand that they do belong in academia, and then allow them to, at a cheaper rate, gain the ground that will push them towards the bachelor's degree, and that we found it ironic that suddenly, when it was a way for the universities to, to count student completion for themselves, it was suddenly a really viable approach, when for years we have struggled to get them to send us the appropriate data for us to award those degrees and reverse transfer for students whom we have sent forward in good faith, recognizing that we didn't want them to retake classes. So it's a great idea if it helps their bottom line, but not so good when it really does focus on the student.
Well, thanks for that explanation. So there is a relationship to the thing we were talking about here a couple of months ago, but.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
It just sounds like a slippery slope to me, that, so this is, if I, I'm asking if I followed it correctly, so it's a stop-out to help students advance, but they're always furious with us with the number of students that we have, because they feel like they're losing out on the dollars they could have in their system. So they're trying to keep students in their system, right?
The concession that we have been able to gain is that they cannot advertise these as, they're not associate degree granting institutions. It has to be a native student to that institution who matriculate it with the intent to receive a bachelor's degree, but who has determined that they are going to drop out. So rather than send them back to us to help rehabilitate those credits and get that student restarted, they determine that it was in their best interest to award that degree. What that actually does is allow them another point of completion, so when we see completion numbers for university degrees in the state of Kansas, it will inevitably go up, because they will be awarding associate's degrees to students who drop out, who have not yet attained their baccalaureate status.
So if I may, they're working to, they're looking at their own metrics, and so they're trying to polish up what they've got to better present to whoever, to their local community and then to the legislature and K-Board, so that they don't have quite the incomplete data points.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm trying to understand their motivation, and I really do love Pittsburgh State, but they should share the love back.
They have worked very well with us, I will say, over the years with our transfer students. Pitt State is the only school in the state that allows full transfer of our Associate of Applied Science degree into their Bachelor of Applied Science programs. They've been a good partner in that regard, and so in some ways, this is a bit of an anomaly, but it is a slippery slope, because with, with that offering, there are now proposals on the table for other universities to begin attempting to offer the same thing, and I think that it will then start to reach into our other degrees. It will start to reach into the Associate of Fine Arts. Eventually, it will start to reach into the Associate of Science for STEM degrees. I think this is the beginning of, of an approach to bolster their numbers while not partnering in the same way with, with the community college.
You're probably supposed to let me say that, but yes, I concur. And as a UMKC graduate, I would say UMKC has always taken great care of our students, so.
Yes.
As a University of Kansas graduate, I'm sorry to say that, but in case the Regents feel like they need to encroach any further, they're welcome to, but we too will look out for our self-interest. Thank you, Dr..
Is there any, is there any evidence to support this notion that, so I guess I agree in theory that if I'm afraid of college and I start at Johnson County Community College and I'm able to get my associate's degree, that's a milestone, and that encourages me then to continue to pursue my education. That's different from, I started at KU thinking I was going to get a bachelor's degree, I get halfway through and change my mind and I can't make it. Is there any evidence to support this notion that if you now give me an associate's degree, I'll go ahead and finish?
The, the only true evidence exists at Georgia State, they believe that they bolstered their retention numbers with a similar strategy, hence them opening this National Institute for Student Success, and kind of going on the roadshow of selling these notions as part of their playbook to universities around the country. I, I do think that the evidence in Kansas will bear out a couple of things, one of which is that the robustness of the supports that we provide for students with regards to academic resource centers, free tutoring, individualization of classes, smaller coursework, where our professors actually know these students, meet with them, talk with them, as opposed to 400-person lecture halls. I think that reality will set in and change the tone and tenor of this conversation. Unfortunately, we will be five to six years down the road before that data surfaces.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, this is just critical, my opinion. Are there any other case studies besides Georgia State? It's a fine school, and I'm just asking.
Right now, that is who they are, who is basing this particular piece, and as they are going to other schools with this, their attempt is to build a corpus of data that supports their smaller case study.
It, it's a creative approach, and I'm not in principle opposed to it, just to let you know my thoughts and Dr. Corb's my thoughts, but they're not willing to let us do four-year degrees. This isn't a two-way street, and then they make this, if I was in court, Madam Chair, I'd say, this is a creative argument, without much empirical evidence to support it.
Well, here's the evidence that I would throw out there, and that is, to your point, we have an institution that offers incredible support for students who are sometimes non-traditional students, students who thought they might never go to college. We provide those small class sizes, the faculty support from, from Andrea and her colleagues to get these students the best opportunity to complete, and we do that, so I've got this handy book that Janelle just walked through, we do that for currently 97, about to be $101 a credit hour compared to over $300 an hour for K-State and KU. This is the best opportunity for students who need a jumpstart to get a college education to do it. That's not going to change, no matter who starts handing out pieces of paper that say associate's degree on it, and so I'll get off my soapbox then, and.
I concur.
Go right ahead, Dr..
I would just say, in the conversations that I have been involved in around this topic, it has more to do with the university looking for exit ramps for students, almost looking at the stackable credential approach, in that they have students that are there and they're going to leave, and so if they could get them to leave with a credential, then that, that's what they're looking at doing. So I think they would say they are truly looking at their own students, they're not looking to take students from us, but.
This is a K-State Trojan horse.
Yes.
K-State's been desperate to do this.
I mean, it opens up a whole new.
Sure it does.
But that's, but the conversations that I have been, have really not been as much, honestly, about the student as about the university being able to create a credential of some kind for students as they exit versus having them just drop.
Well, that was an interesting conversation. Any other comments, concerns? Thank you, trustee Cross, for your report.
That concludes my report, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Next up is the Foundation Report, and trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the Executive Committee and Board of Directors both met in April, so we met on April 9th and also on the 16th. At the last meeting, we did take a tour of the new student-focused areas of the college, and it's just, if you've not been there, I'm sure you all have, but it's really wonderful. And it's a fun committee to be on, because they're just doing so many really cool things. So I get to go through what those things are with you. So, they have Sub-Enchanted Evening 2024, put that on your calendar. It's going to be set for November 9th at the Overland Park Convention Center. The event chairs Stephanie Meyer and Ashley Sherard hosted their first meeting on Wednesday, April 3rd. The Johnson County of the Year Selection Committee selected Carl and Jill Gerlock as our 2024 honorees. There's a press release that went out on the 4th of April, so you can, can see that. There's more information if you get on the website. Sponsorship opportunities are available right now, and this year you'll have the ability to purchase half of a table, four seats for $2,000, or a full table will sell for $5,000. And there's more details coming soon. There's also underwriting opportunities that will be available. The Foundation is collaborating with the Theater Department to host a community event on April 26th that's honoring the impact of the late Harvey Bodker, and fitting the event, fittingly, the event will be held in the Bodker Black Box Theater at 6:00 p.m., and immediately following, the attendees will be enjoying, enjoying a student production of cabaret. All trustees are invited to attend and should have received an invitation, and any of you who are interested, you might want to get on the website and see what's going on. We also have a spring scholarship luncheon that will be held on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 11:30 in the Capitol Federal Conference Room in the Rainier Center. Please RSVP if you can attend. Co-chairs have been named for our Summer Sips and Scholarships event, so Nancy Ingram and Memmie Eckert will serve as our secondary honorary chairs, and the event will be held on June 20th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the Wiley Culinary and Hospitality Academy. So, please let Joy Ginsburg or Stephanie Solins know if you have guests that you think should be invited to this event, and there's going to be more information coming out soon on that. The Johnson County Community College Foundation collaborated with the fashion design and merchandising team to raise funds for student scholarships through their Off the Cuff runway show. The event was completely sold out, and I didn't get to go, and raised about $10,000 for the program and scholarships, so that's pretty exciting. And then tickets are still on sale for the Cohen Community Series benefiting student scholarships and educational programs, so George Thurlgood and The Destroyers will be performing on May 11th at 8:00 p.m. in Yardley Hall. To purchase tickets, go to jccc.edu, George, there's still tickets there. And then lastly, save the date for the Harvest Dinner, which will be Friday, August 23rd in the Rainier Center, and more details coming soon. Questions, comments?
Trustee Ratan.
I went to the fashion show, and it was so cool and so fun.
Dr. Corb was telling me she was going too. I was so upset, I couldn't go.
Yeah, that's all.
And it was their first, right?
No, they've been doing this for like 20 years.
Oh, okay.
And so I just went for the first time, but I heard it was really one of the best.
But you'll be going again next year.
Yes, it was so cool. There were 11 student designers who did five designs each, and everyone had a totally different point of view.
Wow.
Okay, any other questions or comments? You do have the Fund Report.
I do.
I will say that.
I know.
There are so many amazing things that go on with the foundation.
I'm glad trustee Hamel was not here.
And Summer Sips was, the inaugural event was last year, and we had an absolute blast. Trustee Ratan, trustee Smith-Everett, and I were all there. It's a great opportunity to engage female leaders throughout the community in just a terrific event, so I'm looking forward to that, Sub-Enchanted Evening. Always, congratulations to, to Carl and Jill Gerlock, to, more. Always, congratulations to Carl and Jill Gerlock, two more deserving people I could not think of, and two people who are the least likely to want to be standing in the limelight. And so I'm very thankful for them. So thank you for your report.
And I would just, you know, add to that, that there were a lot of really good candidates. And so it was a really difficult decision to make, and Trustee Ratan was part of that. It was really interesting. Good discussion.
All right. Moving on, we are ready for our committee reports and recommendations. And first up, standing in for Trustee Hamel is our own Trustee Cross with the Management and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held our meeting at 8:30 AM on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024. The information related to the meeting can be found on pages 1 through 7 of the board packet. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. We had a report from Information Services, Rob Caffey, along with Jim Brown and others, provided a report with respect to Quarterly Information Services. Their report included an information security update and highlighted activities and initiatives of the Academic Technology Services Team. Among the other things, ATS provides desktop and mobile computing services and teaching and learning support. We had a budget update from Janelle Vogler related to the Johnson County property values and an estimated revenue from property taxes, student aid, tuition, that we just discussed. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, reviewed the status of CDL driving range and progress on the GEB first-floor renovations currently under construction. Jim Fieker, Executive Director of Procurement Services, presented the monthly procurement report. This month, we have four bid recommendations and one single source recommendation. First, with respect to commercial insurance broker services, it is the recommendation, Madam Chair, of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Thomas McGee for a base year of $40,000 and a total estimated expenditure of $249,000 throughout the renewal options. And I so move.
Second. I have a motion by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion on the recommendation?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Go right ahead.
The next recommendation, Madam Chair, of the Management and Finance Committee is that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Zogo Tech for a three-year initial base term of $382,580 and a total estimated expenditure of $643,977 to Zogo Tech throughout the renewal options. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Trustee Cross, what is an enterprise data warehouse?
I would imagine it has something to do with data storage.
Is it like a real, physical thing, or is it...
Runs on electricity.
I can comment on that a little bit. It takes data from disparate sources and puts them together and allows you to take those data and report out on them.
Okay, so is it like, it's not like a building where we're storing stuff?
No, it is not.
Is this accurate, staff? Are we saying the right thing?
Yes, it's primarily utilized by our Office of Institutional Research.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that. I'm showing my ignorance here, so I apologize for that.
On here it says institutional reporting, compliance reporting, data analytics, various ad hoc requests.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that, Trustee Ratan. Any other discussion?
Electricity.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Go ahead with your next recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from Diamond Contractors for WCMT 111 and 111A remodel in the amount of $294,732 with an additional 10% contingency of $29,473 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $324,205. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion?
Don't remember, but I asked at the management meeting why we were doing this, because these welding booths are fairly new. They were just put in place in this building since my first term, but I remember the answer made sense at the time, and so I'm just going to go with it. But I just wanted to cite that I recognize those are new and we need to make a revision for some reason.
I forget. What is the reason? It's a good question.
Actually, this recommendation relates to the room that we're sitting in right now, and it doesn't have to do with the welding booths. I think that is maybe the next recommendation that's coming up. The one that we're talking about right now would just be to essentially take this room and just split it into two separate classroom and laboratory areas for the career and technical education programs.
Okay, thank you.
And I just would point out too, we talked about this at the committee as well, that the source of funds for this one is our workforce development and apprenticeship funding that's provided through the state of Kansas.
Thank you.
So this room has served us well, but it will transition. All things must come to an end, right? Any other discussion on this recommendation? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and I believe next is the welding lab then.
Yes, ma'am. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from ACI Build Group for WLB renovation in the amount of $555,291 with an additional 10% contingency of $55,529 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total amount of $610,820. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. I believe you have one more.
Yes, ma'am. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to Canren for a five-year agreement of $156,558. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Does that conclude your report?
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
I just wanted to comment briefly for those who may be watching this board meeting. It appears as though we go through these recommendations and, you know, vote on these amounts of money with very little discourse or thought. And I just want to make it clear that all of these things have been completely vetted in committee before they ever come to the board. All of us have had an opportunity to review this information and materials well in advance of the meeting and to have any questions that we have answered. And so I just want to dispel any notion that maybe we're just voting on this stuff like, okay, let's just spend $600,000, it's no big deal. It's all been carefully considered and thoroughly vetted, so I just wanted to make that comment. And thank you for your report, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up, Student Success Committee and Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rayo. We met at 9:45 on Wednesday, April 3rd, an MTC. We had a report on the family impact. Elisa Waldman provided an update on family data shared with KBOR as a part of KBOR's goal monitoring initiative related to short-term training programs. Family data focuses on affordability, access, and success. She highlighted several sources of funding related to the pandemic's recovery efforts and amounts received by JCCC to provide training and education to qualified students. As a result of this funding, a total of 5,931 students were enrolled between October 2020 and June 2022, totaling $3,287,875. From February 2023 to October 31st of 2024, JCCC has been able to provide scholarships for short-term workforce training through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and state and local recovery funds, which provided $1.1 million. Students who benefited from the funding praised the opportunities that they were able to pursue because of the awards. We also had a curriculum update from Gurbeshon Singh presented for the 2025 and 2026, 2024, 2025 academic years. All changes were approved by the committee. Complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of the April 18th board packet. For affiliation agreements, Amy Sellers presented one career-ready agreement. The agreement was approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently on the consent agenda of the April 18th board packet. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Trustee Ratan? Trustee Cross?
I just wanted to thank the committee for allowing me to sit in on it. I didn't mean to be inappropriate, but I was there, and Judy Corb told me to.
You and Laura broke the rules.
I apologize.
Not sure exactly what it is you're apologizing for, but apology accepted.
I sat at the table during the committee meeting, and when I was chair, I had asked us not to do that, so I broke my head a little. Sorry.
I have a quick question. The workforce development funding that was provided, what sorts of career paths are those leading to?
I don't have the career paths.
They're sort of...
Elisa, you're going to answer my question, aren't you?
She is.
Elisa Waldman, Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education. So these are all non-credit workforce development courses. Most of the enrollment has occurred in business and leadership, computer applications, so lots of cybersecurity, data analytics, those sorts of certifications. And CDL have been primary users, but as Trustee Ratan said, there have been almost 6,000 registrations. So it is really across the board, and I had shared that data. I'd be happy to get that all to you. But again, these are, most of them are geared towards an industry certification.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I will say, we still have funding available, so through the Johnson County Government, so still have quite a bit available, and you can still help spread the word. Through October 31st, it's available.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other comments? Very well, thank you. Thank you for your report, Trustee Ratan. Next up is the President's Recommendations for Action, and the first portion of that is the Treasurer's Report. And standing in for Trustee Hamel is Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You can find the Treasurer's Report in your board packet in pages 10 through 20. The packet includes the report for the month ended February 29th, 2024. Some items of note include the general post-secondary technical education funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. An ad valorem tax distribution of 3.6 million was received in March and will be reflected in next month's report. And expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended February 29th, 2024, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Smith Everett, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And that brings us to the monthly report to the board, and Dr. Corb.
Thank you. First, I would like to officially welcome and introduce Christina McGee, who is our new Vice President of Human Resources. And I was thinking about this. We have tapped into her expertise so much already that it feels like she's been here longer than a month. And so I don't know if it feels like that to her, but it's like she's... She has been a great help with just everything that we have going on. So Christina, we're really, really happy that you're here. And so she's, we continue to be very excited about her being here. We're in the final stretch of the semester, so students, faculty, staff, everyone is working hard at finishing up spring classes and getting ready for all of the graduations that take place in May. It's always a very exciting time, but at the same time, you know, that we're finishing up, we're also looking ahead, so we're already enrolling for summer. And fall enrollment starts, I think, next week. And so we're pushing ahead with all of those things. We can rarely have a conversation that we don't talk a little bit about the Culpepper Salary Study, so I need to mention that we are very excited to let you know that implementation of the study will actually begin on May 1st. So communication is going out next week to all employees, and we'll do a full explanation of the, you know, the purpose of the study and then the process all the way through, and so that we make sure that people understand where we've ended up with it. We do know that we're not quite finished because we have a few jobs that we're still looking at the relevant years of experience, but HR is working really hard to get those all finished up and have committed to getting those done. But the overall estimate right now is that 27% of the 1,600 employees that were in the study will receive an increase, and this includes all staff. This is not faculty in this study. The good news about that is that means that 73% of our jobs are currently already within the current market range, and so that's good. It's always really hard to know what to pull out and talk to you about, but a very recent, because it just happened yesterday, activity that went on that I thought I would mention. We had the opportunity to host a Japanese delegation of 50 business representatives. And so they visited Johnson County Community College to learn about workforce and training resources that are available in the region. The trip was organized by Kansas Department of Commerce and the Japan External Trade Organization out of Chicago. But while they were here, they toured our career and tech ed buildings, and they had traditional barbecue lunch made by Dining Services. So Jason's group again came through, and they had dessert from the Culinary Department. And so they had a good time while they were here. There were also presentations made by Elisa Waldman, our VP of Workforce and Continuing Ed, the Mayor of DeSoto, and also a representative from Panasonic. So it was a good day. We had relatively short notice on pulling this event together, and so I just wanted to recognize the teams that worked together to pull it off because it took a bit to make that happen. But it included our workforce development team, industrial tech programs, NARS program, Dining Services, culinary program, and of course, the scheduling team, as well as others, I'm sure, that ended up helping out. But all in all, the visitors were, they were so impressed with Johnson County Community College, both with our capabilities that we have as far as training and the resources, but also with our beautiful campus. They were so. So we did a really good job, I think, in pulling that together on short notice. So because I can't mention everything, I just want to remind you that the monthly campus report to the board, which is available in SharePoint, it just highlights so many of the activities and things that we have going on. It really gives you a good picture of the entire campus and everything that is happening. So I just want to remind you that that is there to get a little bit more information. You have a printed copy of this. On the bottom of that are the enrollment numbers. They, we'll probably talk more about that another time, but I just wanted to make sure that you have them as a reference. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Dr. Corb? I will just say this for Christina McGee. To say that we're glad you are here is perhaps the biggest understatement of the decade. And we know that you're here because we're not talking about HR stuff for the first time in like a long time, every day, all day. And so thank you for coming to our institution. We've had the opportunity to visit just briefly. You're going to be a tremendous asset here, I have no doubt, and I'm glad we haven't scared you away during the first 30 days. So congratulations and welcome on behalf of the entire board. We're so glad you're here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your report, and that takes us to new business. To the best of my knowledge, we have no new business. To the best of my knowledge, we have no new business.
Madam Chair, it is just a small point I want to make that is sort of not new business, but I needed to find a place to thank Tom Hall for raising the temperature by one degree in the last hour so that I can thaw while sitting here.
Is that what happened? Because I'm comfy for like the first time ever.
I saw magic happen after he left and came back in, and all of a sudden I could remember what my fingers felt like. And I wanted to just bring that up somewhere, so I chose new business. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and thank you for saving us and helping my appendages.
Good job, Tom.
And that's a celebratory, torn for that.
So along the lines of not really new business, but something I wanted to mention. Thank you for that segue into my also doing something equally unorthodox. Very briefly, I know that everybody is probably wondering about the status of the search process for the next president of the college, and I'm going to ask Rachel for the exact date, but I know the RFP is out. The RFP Evaluation Committee is set, and the responses are due April 24th?
I think that's correct.
I think that's right. So that process is moving along. As all of you know who have been through a process like that, it is painstakingly slow, but we want to get it right. And so that's where we are. I just wanted to briefly update everybody on the status of that, and thank you, Rachel and your team, for keeping that moving along. Is there any like real new business, or are we done breaking protocol here? Old business? I don't believe there's any old business we need to take up. Very well. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the time in our meeting to give us an opportunity to take up several items of a relatively routine nature in one vote. And so the first thing I'll ask is, is there any request to pull anything from the consent agenda for individual consideration? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda of the April 18th, 2024 board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Smith Everett, I believe. I heard it coming from this direction. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. We do have an executive session, otherwise we'd be done in like record time, so. But we do have an executive session, and so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one hour. I'm going to be cautiously optimistic on that. We will begin at, how about if we go with 6:20? Can we do that?
Yes, please.
We will begin at 6:20 and conclude at 7:20, at which time open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite Dr. Judy Korb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbeshon Singh, Jim Lane, Christina McGee, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I think I have a motion by trustee Smith Everett, and a second by trustee Cross. Any discussion?
Go with that.
I love Johnson County Community College.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries six to zero. We will start our executive session at 6:20. We have returned to open session from executive session at 7:20. No action was taken, and at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Motion made by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.
How do you count that?
That was three to one.
You count that as three to one?